This is called to order the November 3rd, 2021, regular meeting of the Duck Town Council. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Nancy Cavanagh, who basically is serving her last regular meeting on the council, if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and just as it is in the law.
Please join me in a moment of silence. At this time, we're going to go to public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and I'll limit your comments to three minutes. There being no one, we'll go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes minutes from the September 1st, 2021, regular meeting, minutes from the September 10th, 2021, special meeting, a budget amendment, and updated records retention schedule. The budget amendment increases the state grant revenue line for an unbudgeted Governor's Crime Commission grant, increases expenditures in the police department for the amount of $24,500 for radio equipment to be purchased with these grant funds. The updated records retention schedule is a new schedule issued by the NC Department of Natural and Cultural Resources that governs the records for local governments. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is presented.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes four to zero. Going on to old business items deferred from the previous meeting, starting with item 4A, discussion consideration of submitting requests to extend the Dare County Tourism Board and National Fish and Wildlife Grants relating to the North Duck Village Coastal Resiliency Project. Joe?
Good evening, Mayor Kingston, members of council, members of the public in attendance this evening. Wanted to just outline for you the, just a little bit of the background and intent of this. We won't belabor it, but for those who aren't as familiar, the town had recently received word in through several different avenues that we are likely to be awarded our BRIC grant, the large grant, either $1.7 or $1.85 million, depending on, we'll, I guess, find that out when we get the actual application, what the official amount is, but very substantial grant that will allow us to move forward with all of the aspects of that coastal resiliency project in North Duck Village. So again, we're talking about the living shoreline, shoreline stabilization components of that, as well as the sidewalk, bike lane, and then raising the elevation of the highway through that stretch to make that whole corridor more resilient. The only unfortunate part of that is the timing, as I reported at the last council meeting. We are looking at a December-January timeframe, we've been told, for that award to occur, which means that the project, we just won't have time to construct the project this year. And we're going to have to look at a, earliest start date would be mid-October, you know, maybe November of next year, because of the need for closing lanes as part of that project. They would always keep a lane open, but we just can't do that during anywhere but the low season, in terms of traffic flow and the impacts it would have. So with that in mind, the issue that presents to us is that pushes our previously approved grants out of that, those grant cycles. So we have approval, we have to spend that money within a certain timeframe in order to take advantage of those grants. So what we're doing tonight is the first step in requesting another extension for both of those grants. There are two of those grants, one in the amount of $147,806 from the Dare County Tourism Board. That was in support of the bike and pedestrian improvements. We would be requesting a one-year extension of that grant that would take it through June of 2023. And then we have a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation in the amount of $384,011.25 in support of the living shoreline component of the project. And we would be requesting, again, another one-year extension from that organization to allow us to continue to use their match toward this project. And then, as you know, as previously mentioned, with the addition of the BRIC grant, the town's contribution in matching all three of those grants has been reduced significantly. So as we talk about budget next year, I think we'll be able to report some very positive things to you in regards to stretching our public dollars a little bit further with these grants. So that is the intent of this. We've prepared Resolution 21-14 that outlines the reasons why we're making these requests and requesting those two funding agencies for those extensions. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council members might have at this time.
Joe, have you had any conversations with either organization with respect to carrying over the grants?
I've had conversations with both. They both went positively with the staff. Now, technically, the staff doesn't make either decision, so they're, they would move it forward to the boards who would be making those decisions, but at least the initial conversations were very positive with both.
Any additional questions for Joe? Without any discussion on the Resolution 21-14, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-13 to ask for those extensions as presented.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor?
It's 14.
14, thank you.
There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Going on to item number 4B, discussion consideration of the Second Amendment to the Solid Waste and Commercial Recycling Agreement between the Town of Duck and Waste Management, and to authorize the town manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the town.
Drew? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Communicated with you all in writing about these amendments, so there's, there's three things that we're amending in our contract with Waste Management. The first one reverts us back to the original trash collection schedule, so the whole town will be one zone, no more two zones. So that's the first. That would take effect on January 31st. They originally had asked to do it concurrent with the change of the season in the spring. We countered with January 1st, and we have agreed on January 31st. Gives them time to notify their customers and gives us time to work with our, all of our property owners, and then also other interested parties such as rental agencies and such. We want to really get the word out and try to educate people about what the rules are regarding when you can roll the cans out and when they need to come back. So we're going to be doing a lot more communication, but this is the first piece of that, so that's the amendment of the contract. The second one changes the collection days for commercial recycling. Contract reads that it happens on Tuesdays and Saturdays. In practice, they've been collecting on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Saturday is not a day to bring a big truck into Duck, especially during the busy summer season. And as long as they're able to keep the containers empty enough so they can continue to be used by our commercial establishments, we don't have an issue with that as staff. Waste Management has agreed that if there are, is a problem location, they will work with staff and try to come up with some sort of accommodation to be sure that we don't end up with overflowing recycling containers. Again, that's just the commercial. And then the third is to change the time that they can begin collection. Right now, the contract reads seven o'clock. We're recommending moving that to five in the morning. You heard Gerard say here last month, the most reasonable time that they could get here, the earliest they could get here would be six, but they don't want to get jammed up if they happen to show up at 10 minutes of six and start collecting. So they, they want to try to live within, within the contract. So those are the three, those are the three amendments to the contract that we have.
Questions for Drew?
Drew, just for the benefit of those that might be watching or reading the minutes later, can you, can you qualify the commercial dumpsters that are in residential neighborhoods? Can you qualify, can you?
So this is all, so this is all commercial recycling, not waste, so this is just the recycling.
So if there's a dumpster in a residential area, then it's Tuesday, Thursday?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
A recycling dumpster.
Recycling.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we need to start working with, I think, with the property management people about what, because I can't think of another solution about getting the cans off the street that sit out there for days and days and days at a time. And that seems to be a big problem, because people leave on Saturday, they put it out maybe on Saturday, and it sits out there until Tuesday with this new contract, with the old, with the thing that's about to change. They've been sitting out there much longer, so there'll be some relief. But I think we need to have a discussion about that in the future.
And we're certainly open to suggestions, and I know Sibodo is familiar with the industry. So if we, if there's ways that we can communicate that we haven't been, we certainly, certainly want to know that. You know, we talked here, I believe, at the last council meeting. We don't, we don't want to get to the point where we have trash police, where we have police trash cans and write citations violation of town code for people leaving the trash cans out. So we really want to work on, on education and getting the same level of compliance that we get from the resident property owners, who seem to be pretty good about bringing their, their carts back, see if we can work on that.
Yeah, I don't disagree that it's an educational piece, but also a functional piece. And there's a little bit of history in that around the Outer Banks with Southern Shores, who tried to institute a fine levied on property owners if the property manager didn't comply. That didn't last too long. And then Nags Head is actually have an initiative right now that one of our representatives from our company is going to go into a meeting. I'll be interested in hearing what that's all about, but it's, again, the idea of how to, particularly on the beach road in Nags Head, get the cans to be rolled in. I know, I may have mentioned it before, but we started something this year that we can do as a company, where we can text the folks to remind them to put it out, because that's another problem, is you tell folks when trash day is, and they're on vacation, so they're not thinking of it, then the trash doesn't get picked up. And so trash is an ongoing thing that, that can be addressed better. I love the idea of more education. Sounds like the staff, in addition to everything else they're doing, is going to help, because I know even in our recycling, we're contaminating our recycling in a great big way. I'm surprised they still let us do it. So anything we can do to educate everyone about what can go in a recycling thing, and I'm thinking just really simplify it and just break it, and just make it, these are the only things. And just finally, I'll say on this point, which I think about a lot, I think about trash a lot sadly, but in other areas that I'm, that I'm familiar with, running through Airbnb or different communities that are in environmentally sensitive areas like ours, the trash restrictions are incredibly strict, you know, the, you know, something like the Orcas Islands, they, you've got like one, you know, you can just put, you've got to hold your waste like really to a minimum. I don't think we're going that far, but other areas, they're very strict about trash, and I think people are getting more and more accustomed to having stricter trash regulations. So I don't disagree. I think it's going to take a lot more conversations, but it's a good idea to, to look at ways we can improve the, look in at functionality of our trash pickup.
You know, perhaps, Drew, when you, the staff considers new stickers, maybe we can make those stickers perhaps bigger and maybe emphasize rollback versus days of collection. And perhaps that might assist also in the messaging.
Okay, thank you.
So any other discussion? There being none, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve the amendment.
And to authorize the manager to execute the same on behalf of the town.
I'll make it that we authorize the town manager to execute an amendment on behalf of the town with Waste Management to change their recycling and solid waste. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Item number 4C, discussion consideration of authorizing the town manager to execute contracts for duck trail improvements and retaining wall replacement. Sandy?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to everyone that's sitting at the table, and thank you, Nancy, for all your time with the town. Just to recap briefly, last month, we were here and presented some bids for duck trail improvements between Oyster Catcher and Blue Heron, where we previously reconstructed the trail with concrete. At that time, we had a $53,920 shortfall, and we were instructed to wait and see what happens with the bulkhead retaining wall improvements that were planned between Wood Duck and Pin Tail and also just south of Norbanks. We received those bids, and they are also over budget, about $14,000, which is not surprising, given the current economic market. Actually, that bid is really good. I was expecting higher, so I'm not disappointed with that, but that still leaves us with close to $70,000 over budget. And we are looking for direction from the town as to whether or not you would like us to move forward with both, understanding that there's a, close to a $70,000 shortfall, or whether you want us to reduce some scope, whether it be part of the trail or part of the retaining walls. The retaining walls, if you look at those bids, the larger one between Pin Tail and Wood Duck comes in at $66,239, so that's close to our shortfall. We could certainly postpone that another year. Town staff would recommend that we do both, but we're looking for your guidance on how you want us to proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Sandy. I was going to add one other comment. Sandy's done a good job of outlining that, and the report hopefully does as well. The other thing that the, the council had asked staff to take a look at was revenue sources to, to cover this. So we did have that opportunity, and curiously enough, this ties into my presentation earlier. If you, you know, if you'll recall, we had quite a substantial amount of money budgeted in, in this current budget that would go toward that coastal resiliency project. With obtaining the BRIC grant, that, first of all, that amount reduces drastically, very significantly, about half a million dollars for the town's contribution. But the other thing is, with the timing, that is not, no longer going to occur within this budget year. So if it was the desire of the council to consider moving forward with these projects, with the understanding the bids came in higher than the, the estimates, but if you do wish to move forward, you already have quite a bit of money allotted in this same line item for that other project that could be used for these projects if you wish. So we did want to point that out to you. It would not even take a, a budget amendment or anything like that in order to come up with the, the revenue for this project.
That was my question, to see if we had a, would require for the auditing purposes a budget amendment, because I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with the projects, but.
As Mr. Hurd said, it's, it's all, the brick project and these projects are all budgeted in the same department, and you approve your budget ordinance by department, so there's, there's money there.
Okay.
It'll just be, at the end of the year, it'll be $69,000 less that will roll into your fund of balance.
Okay.
Drew and Joe, is it safe to assume that in fact, if we actually only spent the budget amount this year, we'd probably roll the, the balance the next year, so it would have been an expenditure next year on our next year's budget?
Yes.
More than likely, we would have probably planned to complete the project next year anyhow.
Right. These are projects that, that need to be done for a number of reasons, and I know, you know, when Sandy and Joe and I were talking about it, Sandy's got some concerns related to public safety.
Yeah.
There's the trip hazards on the, on the path, and then there's the, the issue of how stable that retaining wall is. That could probably wait another year without causing any problems, but it seems to be bundled up pretty well. I don't, we don't have a crystal ball to know what construction prices are going to be next year. I don't believe that they're going to be significantly less than they are this year with the amount of work, and that's what's driving the prices, is there's so much work out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the labor and the material costs are definitely driving a lot of things. And while this, from a monetary standpoint, the retaining walls are, that's a good price. The, the trail improvements, we said last month, you know, according to our engineer, the unit costs were spot on, but there's a multiplier in there. I don't see a multiplier in the retaining walls. That's not to say if we wait a year that that's not going to be the case next year. We've already seen that once, so.
Well, if I could add, also add that we're trying to allocate, as we budget every year, you know, some money toward these maintenance costs, and so we really, by pushing it off a year, I don't think we're gaining anything, because we need to keep maintaining all these, these things, and, you know, segment by segment.
I mean, we could certainly, next year, look at some cost savings from, in trail improvements along the bike, the multi-use path, because this last section is probably the, the most liable in terms of public safety with the root intrusion. We've got one more section in Sanderling after that, and that section doesn't really have any root intrusion, it's not riddled, it doesn't have a lot of tree over canopy, and it's elevated, so we don't see standing water. So that section could potentially wait another year if we needed to allocate, if we needed to find that $69,000, $70,000 somewhere else.
Well, I'm in favor of doing it all now. We already pushed it off a little bit, and that, that increased cost is what we're seeing now. And I, and Joe warned us about that last year, so I don't think we should make the same mistake twice.
I'm in favor of it.
Any other questions for Drew, Joe, or Sandy? I agree with going along with it all, so that is the worst section. I did go up there and take a look at it, I didn't realize how bad it was till, driving by is one thing, walking, it's another thing. Any other comments or questions? There being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the town manager to execute contracts for the duck trail improvements and retaining wall replacement as presented with the adjusted cost.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Joe, Drew, thank you. Item number five, new business, we have none at this time. Item number six, items referred to in presentation to the town attorney. Robert?
Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Item number seven, items referred to in presentations from the town manager. Drew?
I'll start with departmental reports. Mr. Hurd is going to be the first up.
We'll start off with permit activity. Kind of an interesting month from this standpoint. It was actually spot on with what we had last year during a busy month, as far as the building permits. Those are your new construction, renovation, repair type of permits. And overall, as you can see in the upper right corner there that I've highlighted, we have, we're up 12% on the year from a very busy year last year on those types of permits. The interesting thing that came up is after having some pretty strong months in the trade permits, again, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, that type of thing, this, it dropped significantly from last year and from last month, for that matter, so well below there, and that, that drop carried it down, so we're actually trending below where we were last year on that. And mainly due to that, if we look in the bottom right corner, you see we're actually down a little bit for the, the year as a whole, if we're looking at all the different types of permits there. Some interesting patterns there. You see an awful lot of activity up there in the northern half of town there, up above, you know, Carolina Dunes stretching all the way up through Sanderling. Quite a bit of renovation activity going on there. Little bit, little bit less so on the southern side in this particular month, but again, you can see it's dispersed pretty well throughout the neighborhoods there. Just a couple of things to highlight, we did have two, issued two permits for new construction. One, very, very modest sized house at 1332 Duck Road, three-bedroom residence there. And at 113 Bayberry Drive, if that address rings a bell, that is the first property that we approved, the special, at the time, we called it special exceptions for the fill in those lots that had been dug out and used as a borrow, borrow pit years ago. That was one of those lots, and we've issued a new construction permit on, on that lot, now that they've completed the fill. At 1474 Duck Road, an interesting project there, we had a house that was on a double lot. The owners chose to re-subdivide the property. In order to do that, they had to move the house over, and, and then they're going to be constructing a house on the, the other, the other property there. So interesting, little project there in a couple of ways. Then just several pretty substantial renovation projects, at 106 Magnolia off of East Tuckahoe, 114 East Seahawk, and 121 Duck Landing, just across the road here in that Duck Landing So those are the things I just wanted to highlight as far as development activity, and move right into, just, just a few. I don't have a lot this month, but just to remind you, we are, we have scheduled the traffic study presentation coming up for your mid-month meeting this month on the 17th. So VHB is preparing to do that. I will have a meeting with them to just kind of talk through some of those things coming up next week. Again, we thanked all the staff and volunteers who participated in some of the data gathering of that study. It was very helpful, and that'll be information you'll, you'll see in the, the study report. We've had another milestone, I guess, with our community planner position. We interviewed candidates for the position on Friday. My thanks. candidates for the position on Friday. My thanks to the staff as well as some outside folks we brought in to help assess the planners from a technical standpoint. We were able to get Michael Zaner, NAGC's former planning director, as well as Laurie LaCicero, who's the planning director for Currituck County, as well as several important members of our staff who were involved in, in those interview processes, helping to assess the candidates. We did come up with a top candidate after doing some, you know, reference checks, background, looking into a few things. We did make an offer that was accepted today. So we do have a candidate and will be potentially starting on November the 22nd. So we're glad for that, and that'll certainly help, you know, get, get things rolling in the right direction as far as the workload and, you know, working with that within our department. So thank you again for your generosity in approving that position. And we'll be able to do some really good things moving forward with that.
Excellent.
And last thing I had, I told Sandy I would go ahead and say this, and I'm afraid of what would happen if I didn't. But it is our first, first up, you know, next, next week on November 11th will be the first volunteer planting session for our beach grass planting. So for those folks who are interested, it's easy to remember, 11 at 11. So November 11th at 11 o'clock. The location is still to be determined. We're still trying to figure out where might, the best place to start might be. But please put that on your calendars if you're interested. And even if you can't make that one, like many other years, there'll be plenty of other opportunities to engage in that really nice community building event. So thank you for your time this evening. Any questions?
I've just had one, Joe. That, that small three bedroom, I noticed it said it was above a four car garage. Is that an ADU or is that just a garage that was built on an individual lot?
No, this is the primary structure on the lot. So it is, it's, it's both. You know, the, the entire residence is elevated above a larger than typical garage underneath.
Always good to have storage space.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Get that organized. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to counsel seated. Mr. Shiano, welcome to the board. And quickly, thank you Nancy for your service for the town. She's still a volunteer firefighter with us at 22 years. She has over 20 years with counsel, and that's the 25th Turkey Trot. So when you add that together, that's 67 years of service to duck. So thank you for that. Crazy.
I wonder why my hair's gray now.
Totally. So tonight, I'll present our October activities for Duck Fire Department. We'll start with calls for service. And with that, to date, we have 507 calls for service. Significant number. You know, I love my numbers. Our year to date total highest ever was 502. And we're in October at 507. So you can see the impacts of the beginning of the summer and during the summer, that definitely our call volume went up a bit this year. But it's also leveled out. I think we've seen that even with traffic, that this month was a typical month for us with 45 calls for service there. So this over here, I'm blind. I have to look both ways. Again, about 45 calls, similar to last year, 21 of those calls, and I'll show in the pie chart, were medical related. Then we had a little of everything with that, including surf rescue calls and, and such. And that's broken down. You all get the, the weekly report every week. October activities, we had 45 incidents total. Like I said, three fire inspections. Those are ramping up. Sandy's gone ahead and started scheduling those out. So we'll be busy the next few months. Training hours for the month, we had 467 hours. And I did break them down. 251 were career and 216 were volunteer hours for the total. And that's what I'm going to really highlight tonight is training. We had an opportunity last week, and Sandy's great about this. If we get a demo, you've heard me say this before, if we get a demo project that comes to town, and they're going to take it down and rebuild, sometimes we get the opportunity to actually burn it down and do live fire training. That has to be special circumstances, the right location, the right winds. Everything has to fall in place to that. So that's difficult to do. But what's really helpful is when we can get in an acquired structure and just train without fire, without smoke. Drew had the opportunity to, to visit two of the three days last week. And what this allows us to do is actually train under real, real, real live environmental conditions, if you will. We can pull hose lines in the parking lot all day. We can come up here and pull a hose line. But to actually get into a structure and, and get around stairs, get around corners, get up onto third floors, this is invaluable training. So I just threw in a few pictures here. We do a lot with hose deployment, as you all would want us to do, is to get water on the fire quickly. So we spend a lot of time working on that. And I have several pictures of that, that you can see. This particular home coming down has a spiral staircase, which everyone realized presents its own challenges when we're trying to put a fire out. And also, it was a bedroom up there, which brings life safety issues into it. So it was a great opportunity to take advantage of this house. We also focused in on some specialty trainings, one being vent enter isolate search. This is a technique. If we show up to a burning building, there's a bedroom that's potentially okay to search. We're worried someone might be in there. It's a, it's an aggressive technique in that you need to be skilled, you need to know what you're doing. But it is to make quick entry into a room, isolate that room, search that room, and look for any potential victims. On the right, you see a little yellow. We used a little fake duck dummy we have just to give us a prop. But this is Christian Dick, one of our young firefighters, actually performing the vent enter isolate and search, just to give you an idea. And then also, it's just an opportunity, again, this is a demo house that's coming down. It might be already down. I think it was scheduled for this week, where we can actually go in and just do searches, get into rooms, get into bedrooms, get into closets, get into bathrooms. And then a typical kitchen fire. You have a kitchen fire on your stove, and we're not sure what's going on behind. We have to pull the stove away. We're going to have to remove sheet rock. So we get to practice all this and we're not ruining anyone's house. So again, a shout out to the owners of this home. They were very nice to let us do it and actually filed up and bought us pizza for going in and doing it. So we appreciate the opportunity. Quick CIP budget update. The 800 radio update project where we had to get in compliance. These, this is a picture of a couple of our new radios. I have a new budding photographer that I didn't know with Greg Fiala. That's his picture today. I said, give me a couple of pictures of the new radios. And this is his fine work. So on the fire side, and I'll let Chief Ackerman address where the police are, all our old radios have been replaced now. The programming is complete, so they're in service. We're inventorying the old equipment so that we can get that rebate back for some of them with Motorola. And a big thank you to Captain Jack Scarborough. He's the new person in charge of Dare County Communications. He's made it very easy for us with the new code plugs and everything. And then I'm sure Chief Ackerman would say the same thing. This doesn't happen without DC Bachelet. Trey knows what he's doing with the radios, the logistics around the radios, the programming, getting them in the right vehicles, the right IDs. Big, big project for him. And we thank him for that. Saved us a lot of time and energy there. And then also October, here's two of our firefighters, Captain Dempsey and Aaron, working hard at training, but also had a big month as they both were married in October. I showed them working, and they don't have their pictures back yet. So eventually you'll get the, the human pictures. And with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you again. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. I'd offer my congratulations as well to the four of you and Mr. Shiano as well. And Nancy, I'm, I'll save my things for another meeting. I'm going to be briefed this evening. Just to touch quickly on what Chief Black said, we're also rolling out our radios. We've got our portables rolled out, and we're systematically going through the vehicles now. So very happy with it. Couldn't have done it without Deputy Chief Bachelet. Some of the new features and, and accessories with the radios are going to be great for officer safety. So I'm very happy to have that, to be moving into the 21st century of radios. So I just wanted to give you an update of where we are on policy. About a year ago, we began this, this journey. At this point, we're almost to the end. So we've completed 126 of the 147 policies we set out to completely revamp. Come a long way with that. At this point, we're going to loop back around and begin doing kind of two things at once. The North Carolina Law Enforcement Accreditation Program just began, and it's being piloted across the state right now. But their standards have been released. So we're going to go ahead, get ahead of it, try to make sure that every one of those standards is met in our policy as well as the league's law enforcement risk review at the same time. So our hope is that we can be one of the first small agencies in the state to be able to apply for accreditation and move to that. So excited about that project, but at the same time, glad that we're finally coming to an end because it's been, Monica, your world had trash, my world's been policy for a year. So. October stats, traffic enforcement continues to be up, but motor vehicle crashes are down considerably from what we've seen through the season. We're kind of in that transition phase where we're moving from our business communities back into our residential communities. Got vacant homes that are, that will be coming up. So we'll begin to see us out on foot and doing a lot more neighborhood type patrols. Had two arrests this prior month, and let's see, LPR data has all been posted to the website. We're still working with CIP, trying to get those requests in. And we're hoping we'll be able to improve LPR technology or prove upon what we already have in the coming year. Call volume, we remain on pace. Still, calls are overall up for us, even though we've dealt with a lot of staffing issues this year and getting folks trained. But that kind of brings me to the next piece of, which is the final piece of the pie for us for Thanksgiving. We're happy to have started Officer Jeremy Hemmerite earlier this week on the first. Huge addition for us. He came from neighboring Southern Shore, so that was a big score for us. And so the final piece of the pie is that last position, which, which opened up officially November 1st. So we have a local candidate who's expressed interest, and we're pursuing that, that lead very aggressively in hopes that we can have that 14th onboard and bring those numbers you see every week to zero uncovered or single covered shifts. So working hard towards that. So with that, I'll, I'll make a brief tonight. Any questions? Be glad to answer.
I have a question. Thank you. On the radios, are you finding now that you've got them in place that they're are covering duck from one end to the other? Or do you still see deficiencies in some areas?
There's definitely still some deficiencies. The good side of that is we, we have a new director of communications, and we now have a dialogue that we weren't able to chip into. And there is, it seems to be a, a genuine willingness to fix that problem now. It's the first time we've heard that in a lot of years. So, you know, we've kind of put everything on the table. I think there's going to be a lot of brainstorming about ideas and how to do that. But they've even started to begun some talks about some money that they're willing to look at expending from either the state level or county level to fix it. So totally different thing we've had for a lot of time.
That's encouraging. Is that just, just because of we're, we're on the extreme ends of the county, like Catteris, or maybe Mans Harbor, or somebody like East Lake would have the same issue?
Well, I think that is. We're definitely in some fringe issue, fringe coverage issues. But when it, when the system was developed, there was a finite number of towers. And our closest tower is in Kitty Hawk. And the problem is, is basically geography, terrain for us. The problems we have are areas that are down in, in holes or down in valleys. And, and there is a way to fix that. But ultimately, we, the, the primary solution probably is going to be some type of tower structure here in Duck. But it's not, it sounds simple, but it's not that simple. It has to be integrated with the existing tower. So it's a pretty big undertaking, but kind of too new in the new radios to tell. It's obviously better technology, better equipment, to really get out there and test it and see if, if some of those issues are as bad as they've been. But my hope is that there is some improvement just with the, with the advance of technology, but.
That's great. And I had one other question. When you mentioned all the policy changes, which you said you've been living and breathing for a year, can you remind me, since, you know, you've been on the police force for so long, does it, is it the same kind of policy changes that when Chief Kudo came onboard, he was adjusting to? Or is it something, so those were kind of changed when he came onboard? And then this is just sort of like another evolution of the policies to kind of?
I think that's a great way to, to put it. Policies are always in flow with new laws, new, new case law. So Chief Kudo had begun an overhaul of all of them up to the, the end of his tenure. And then we kind of picked it up from there. Because we're small over the years, we've tended to adopt policies from other, or at least templates. So with this, this revamp, we've partnered with Lexipol, which is a national company that does a lot of policy work with law enforcement. So we're able to really vet the policies, make sure that we're meeting state, federal, and case law standards. So that's something we've never undertaken before. So what it's leaving with is a sound defensible, legally defensible policy. So we've probably taken policy to that next level. But yeah, absolutely is a continuation of the work that had already been done over the years.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, do you get any assistance from the league in that regard?
I do. Matthew is definitely a great contact. If there's, for instance, Senate Bill 300 came down, which was the Criminal Justice Reform Bill. It, it came down very quickly with very quick deadlines. And it really didn't leave a lot of time to, to reach out to others to see how they were establishing some of this stuff. So Matthew's been great to, to send some templates. For instance, we need to have a critical incident database. That was something we got very little time to prepare. So Matthew was instrumental in, in giving me some building blocks to get that done.
Good. Also, can you remind me how we disposed of the old radios? Did we, were we able to sell those or the old radios? How do we dispose of them?
So the majority of them are being traded back to Motorola as part of the, the, as part of the overall deal. What's left will be a number of accessories and things. We'll have to talk about, probably come back before counsel about some of the things we hope to donate to some, some fire departments in the county that, that don't have the funds, batteries, things like that, that Motorola is not going to take back.
Yeah.
And then there'll be some piece of it where we'll, we'll look at selling some of that equipment as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Sorry, one second. Or maybe two seconds. I have a video of my presentation, so it takes, it took a minute to load. So congratulations to everyone. And Nancy, we're very sorry to see you go. And congratulations to Tony. Tonight, I'm going to start with a fun story about beach vitex. So I don't know, Monica knows what I'm talking about. But I don't know if anyone is familiar with beach vitex, but it is a noxious and invasive species on our coast, actually in all of the continental U.S. A long time ago, it was used for dune, stabilizing dunes. But it does not work very well to do that. So this is a story of Sandy Cross identifying beach vitex on three properties. And then the superheroes, the volunteers, helping to go out and eradicate the beach vitex just on Tuesday. We did have someone come from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, the Plant Industry Division, just to make sure I get that right, and did training on both identification and then how to apply the herbicide to the plant. I went and was there the whole time and got a lot of photos and videos. So we're hoping to make a, a couple of short videos that we can use to let our homeowners know in addition to all the other educational information out there, how to identify beach vitex, why it's important to identify it and eradicate it, and to give them resources to do that. So we'll have that at another council meeting. But I did just want to give you guys a little teaser tonight. This is a time lapse video, a very short one, of some of the volunteers and Sandy working on the eradication. So you take a paint scraper and you wound the plant, basically, near the crown. And then you apply the herbicide to it that has a dye in it. So when you see the final video, you'll see a blue dye on the, 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 on So when you see the final video, you'll see a blue dye on the plants. But it was a really great day for it, and it went surprisingly quickly. So it's really exciting. And like I said, I'll tell you a little more about it next time, but it's, it's a really great thing. We haven't had beach phytex spotted on any of the Outer Banks beaches for quite a long time. In fact, there used to be a task force that was disbanded because they were so successful, but it has started to show back up. So more information to come and more educational material to come. Speaking of educational material, I did start this week in the e-news. I put some information about the proposed new trash schedule, now approved new trash schedule. And so we'll be working through, obviously, new stickers, all of those sorts of things to put out. And I'm contemplating using a QR code on the sticker. NAGC had recently did that, and that way, if there's further changes or we adjust things, people can go directly to the webpage, and that will leave us a lot of room for other information like rollback rules. So looking into that. Our LPDI grant is closed out, and so we'll be looking on to our next one, which will be some acoustic upgrades for this room and our microphones. We also are looking towards a sound cleanup. Last year, we did it in early December. We actually did it on Yuletide, because we didn't have Yuletide, and everyone seemed pretty happy with it. It was a lot colder, and people who don't like reptiles were a lot happier with the situation. So we're going to stick to that. We're going to look in the first couple of weeks of December to do a sound cleanup. And working with Joe's son on his Eagle Scout project, we are in the design phase for the rain garden signage. Hopefully, we'll have something back later this week or early next week, so we can start approving final designs. So it's very exciting. And tomorrow, I'll be attending this, oops, the CRS meeting, as will be, all the PIOs are attending, because they're getting ready to roll out a lot of their outreach program. So the county has created some countywide graphics and information, so I'll be attending tomorrow to learn a little more about that. And also, we'll start meeting soon with the local PIOs for the beach nourishment communication We had a few fall events that I know some of you attended. We had Jaws, and 21 people attended that. I think it would have been a lot more, but we're calling it the 4D experience because there was some misty rain, so it made the boat scenes very realistic. Hocus Pocus was shown on the 23rd, and that had 165 people. That was sponsored by Village Realty, and they had a whole kind of Halloween trick-or-treat event, and it went very, very well. We do have some nature on the boardwalks coming up. November 4th was canceled for anyone listening at home, but the people that were on it have been rescheduled because it's supposed to rain tomorrow. So we have an upcoming one on November 9th in the morning and November 23rd in the early afternoon. So if anyone wants to sign up for that, it's on our website, or you can email events@townofduck.com. And I just left this theme slide in there from last time, but we did meet with Santa last week. It was very exciting. He made a special trip here just to meet with us about Yuletide. So we're going to be using more of the park. I know I mentioned that before. Santa is not going to be indoors this year. He'll be on the amphitheater stage so that there's some coverage, but we'll be sending kids around to ask for their Christmas presents a little bit differently, just for COVID safety guidelines. And many of our typical events will return, so just play in Dixieland, the lighting of the crab pot tree, all those types of events will still be there. We're just going to have them a little more spread out for people. And that is all I have tonight. That's another picture of beach phytex. Don't admire that and think you want it in your yard. Any questions?
Thank you, Christian.
You're very welcome. Hello, everyone. Congratulations to everyone again for the elections. Tony, Nancy, we're sad to see you go. So I just wanted to give you the monthly financial update. Funds on hand currently are almost 2.6 million over what we were at for October of last year. We are just above 11.8 million. We have approximately $1,555,865 held in our general checking account. It's roughly 8.9%. It's a little less than we usually keep. We usually try to stay close to 10%. And then, of course, the remaining funds are in the investment accounts. You all received our monthly report. As I noted in the report, in October, we did receive our September property tax collections. These were just over 1.2 million, which brings the town to just over 27% collected as of September 30th. The property tax collections are up this year in October compared to last year because the tax bills went out late last year. Just a reminder about that. The mixed beverage tax and ABC profits were received in October for the June 2021 quarter. The collections were 29,936, which was up compared to last year, which was $11,965. We did receive the sales tax for July collections received in October. These were up 14.4% compared to the last fiscal year. In October, we also received the annual sales tax refund in the amount of $22,038.59. We received the quarterly land transfer tax for July through September collections, as well as the occupancy tax for the August collections. As I noted in the report, we are attempting to get our reports to you in the public to accurately reflect the accrual of shared taxes and other revenues. So it may appear that the revenues are down, but it's merely just a timing issue.
Did you say, I'm sorry, a timing issue? That was going to be my question.
So this time last year, we were reporting September. We're not going to be reporting September until next month.
And is that going to be ongoing? Is that how, so it'll normalize?
Yeah, it'll even itself out. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Overall expenses are within the budget. As we noted last month, some expenditures such as the property liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, those are paid generally at the beginning of the fiscal year, so those are showing as higher percentages used so far. And then, of course, revenue versus expenditures. This just shows you the prior year to the current year-to-date. And then I also wanted to note that our audit firm has completed the audit, and it was approved by the LGC. Lisa Murphy will be here to present the results to you on the December 1st council meeting, and then you will also receive a complete audit report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Moving on to item number eight. Does you have anything else true? Oh, okay.
So a couple things just on beach nourishment. So we are still waiting on two permits. We're still hoping to get to the LGC in December, so our audit is in, as Jessica mentioned, so we've checked that box. The Carter's still believe we can get there if we get our permits. There's some, there may be some issue with the, with the core permit that I heard from the county manager on today, that we're trying to work through some other channels. They've actually hit pause on issuing permits because of a case out of the federal district court in California. So they've hit pause, and we're trying to get them to unpause at least our permit. The bigger issue, and if we need to come back to you all and get a resolution or whatever we need to do, we'll, we'll get that done. For the project, it's, we have about $7 million in savings because of the contractor that we're using, that we need to have this done through the LGC in December. So we really are going to need to push the core. Mr. Outen's already reached out to our congressional delegation, and we'll continue to pester them. I just wanted to let you know that that, that's ongoing, and we're, we're working that problem as best we can. And then the other thing I'll mention is we had, the mayor mentioned the league, so we had a risk management consultant come in from the league, met with Kim Pittman and Steve McMurray, and looked at our facilities, looked at our maintenance and how we're doing, doing maintenance, and made some recommendations. It was interesting, was overall, the comment that the gentleman made was that we are doing very well in maintaining our facility. So, you know, Kim Pittman has been a great addition and has been doing a good job about keeping, keeping things very well maintained. We're just going to work on some documentation in a more formal work order system for him. I just wanted to let you know those two things.
Could I just ask, thank you, could I just ask a little bit more about the nourishment? That, it sounds like, obviously, it's a whole, the entire project, which includes all the other towns in the county. So they're sort of the driving force in getting our, getting these permits through, and we may contribute, as I hear, with the resolution. How does that stack up to the WEEKS contract? I know they were willing to give us a little bit of time, but it seems like, I mean, how much time do we have, and when would we have to postpone the project?
Right, so as I mentioned, so we have, December is the, is the deadline, so we need to, we need to sign.
December 31st?
Yes, we need to sign a contract, so we're, we're under, under the gun.
Okay. I mean, I just, I just, I mean, if it doesn't happen by December 31st, then we're not doing it this year.
No, that's, that's not correct. So it'll just mean we'll have to push the LGC off, we'll have to go back to WEEKS and ask for an additional contract extension.
Okay, that's possible.
Right. Yeah, oh yes, absolutely, it's absolutely possible, yes.
Okay, great. Because the LGC was going to do a special meeting for us, but.
Correct.
Is that still how we're going to get it?
Yes.
To get it through is with a special meeting from the LGC?
Correct, yeah. Their next scheduled meeting isn't until January, so they have agreed to do this once we get our permits.
Thank you for refreshing my mind on this. Good to know WEEKS might have some leeway, and can't really advertise it as a, you know, property management and it was a material fact until we actually have everything in place, so.
Correct, yeah. And as soon as we get, I know we've had some conversations, as soon as we get the information regarding the scheduling of, you know, how WEEKS will take that project on, and which towns will be first, as soon as we get that information, we're going to get it out to the public very, very quickly.
Thank you, Drew. Any further questions for Drew or the staff? Everybody now will move on to item number eight, the mayor's agenda. I have quite a few things this evening. The mayors and chairman meetings have once again started back up after a long hiatus due to COVID, and we had our meeting mid-month, October. The last two meetings, actually, Representative Bobby Hanek has joined us, which has been very valuable from a standpoint of, of hearing what's happening in the General Assembly, and of course, between the budget, and now the, the new issue of being redistricting. And I think all of you have seen in my letter to Destin Hall, which was drafted by our town manager, with respect to the latest proposal for the House, the splitting Garrett County in two, which, and the county has also taken exception to that. We're probably a long ways from the redistricting being completed, but we did go on record, and I've seen NAGC also went on record, basically saying, don't split the county in two. It'd be very difficult, I think, for the county as well as for the six towns to operate with two representatives in the state legislature. So that is obviously an issue that's pending, as well as the budget has not been finalized yet either. And we do have another meeting planned for mid-November. I've had a couple of executive meetings with the, the league. I had one this Monday, I have another one next Monday, and I have a finance committee meeting with the league on November 30th, and Drew and I both have a board of directors meeting and coming up in December 9th, which I believe will be virtual. And also tomorrow morning, actually, I have with the local leadership foundation, which you know I'm chairing the board. We have an executive committee meeting tomorrow morning, and we have a full board meeting in December. I also would like to congratulate Monica, Rob, Sandy on being reelected. Look forward to working together in the coming year. Certainly a shout out to Tony Shiano, and congratulations on being elected to the council. I'd also like to express my appreciation and, on their interest in the election process, that Joe Bakaitis, Ben Vorden, and James Bartlett for participating in the election this year. And it's a lot of work, and certainly, we appreciate you being part of the process. And of course, can't go without thanking Nancy. This will be her last regular meeting, and I don't know how many years, I lost count at 18, so. But we certainly, you'll hear more from us, but we certainly value your contribution over the years and from the beginning.
Thank you.
So, and with that, we'll go to item number nine, and that's going to be council members' agenda, starting with our mayor pro temp, Monica Thibodeau.
Thank you, Mayor. I just did, I've been attending the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau meetings, you know, as our representative in Duck and sit on the budget and finance and other, other executive committee group, as well as the regular board. The only thing of interest that I'm kind of excited about is the ongoing plans for the event site. And the full board approved, were just recommended to, recommended approval of moving forward for John DeLucia and his group, the engineering firm, to talk to, to the, to the different regulatory agencies that are involved, that, so that before really taking it into the public, they want to just see what they can do over the wetlands and things. But they're certainly using Duck as an example, referring to our boardwalk project as a model project, and it's a really, the, the design that you may have seen in the, in the paper or, you know, publicized from people that have reported on that meeting, has, it's an exciting design. It leaves a lot of open space, but also has some walking paths, ability to allow the kiteboarders and kayakers and others to use the site, you know, from ground level, as well as some boat launching or docks, what do I want to say, you know, just slips out a little bit further. So it's a really nice blend of access and views and, and could lend itself to a variety of, of different events, some simultaneously, depending on their size. So I'm really excited about that. More to come on that, but to me, that's just, it's been a long time coming and very exciting. If we can get some approvals on the regulatory agencies, they'll go out for more public comment before any, anything's done, and then figure out how to pay for it. But it's going to be really nice. So that's been very fun to be a part of. I just want to also thank everyone for their vote of confidence, voting me back onto the council. I certainly have appreciated being able to serve the town for this many years and look forward to ongoing service. So thank you for that, and congratulations to my fellow council members who are, have also been reelected. What can I say about Nancy? It'll, it'll take, it would take a really long time, but I think to sum it up, your innovation and your commitment to the town, your ideas that you've shared with, and we've been able to see to fruition, have, I've, I've known, I've seen them firsthand over the years and really have to thank you. You know, the vision, the Jazz Festival, those are all ideas that sprung out of, out of your, of your head and your heart, so, and of course, we always have the turkey trot. But I can't thank you enough for your service to the town over these years and even before we were a town. So I hope you won't be a stranger to Duck, even though you're not going to sit at this seat.
Thanks, Monica.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Councilmember Rob Mooney.
I just have one question for Drew and Joe, maybe. What's going on with the, the extension of the tent thing with the, with the restaurant people?
We were asked to come back to council. We plan on doing that in December. The extension was granted until mid-January at the last council meeting, so they're, they're able to continue. And it was just to get a little further discussion, but we do plan to come to the council with a, with some additional information to allow you to make a decision on extending that further into the future. So that, but that'll occur at the December meeting.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Rob, councilmember Sandy Whitman.
I'd like to congratulate everybody who's reelected and Tony for his election, and
And I know we talked, Kristen talked about Sandy's beach grass planting, and also on Fridays, she has a trash pickup in town at 8:45 that we meet at the town garage. If anybody's interested, just show up. And thanks, Nancy.
Thanks, Sandy. Councilmember Nancy, give it us.
Well, people have said a lot of nice things this evening, so if you'll just give me a moment. I just want to say that incorporating the town was one of the most exceptional experiences I have ever had in my life. Working with the School of Government and the League of Municipalities was really better than any history class, better than any civics class. It was an extraordinary experience, and it was a privilege to be part of that incorporation committee. We worked with so many people locally and across the state to make this happen, and it's really amazing. It's like no other. And when I tell the story to people that aren't familiar with it, they're always in awe that we actually created a town. You don't hear that every day. I've had the privilege of serving alongside a lot of our community visionaries, and I'm very appreciative of that. They were, some of them aren't here any longer, but they were people who dared to imagine something better, bigger, and more creative. And I think we all live and benefit from their vision and their willingness to make that a reality for the people in the community. There are a lot of people that love this town. On any given summer day, probably 20,000 people love this town. They come here maybe just to vacation, they come here to start lives, they come here in a second chapter of their lives to start a business and give it all they've got, they come here to retire, they come here after decades of dreaming to be here, but I've never met anybody that doesn't love it. And so sitting here and being able to be responsive and make that experience great for all sorts of people, regardless of their connection and their commitment to the town, has really been wonderful. I also want to send a very, very heartfelt thanks to the staff. I've seen every single person in this town hired and grow into positions, and this town wouldn't be what it is if it wasn't for the staff that we have and the leadership that has, you know, set the course. And so thank you, and thank you to the community. I'm going to miss it, and it's been a privilege. So.
Thank you, Nancy. Item number 10, reopen it for public comments. If you'd like to make comments to the council, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. There being no one wishing to address the council, I'll close public comments. Is there any additional business to come before the council this evening? Seeing done, I'll remind the council, our next scheduled meeting will be the mid-month meeting on Wednesday, November 17th, at 2021 at 1:00 p.m. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved all in favor of adjournment.